Good evening, everybody. We on? How we doing?
We're good.
Welcome, welcome, everybody. Welcome, everybody at home. I'm really, really happy to see everybody. This is really exciting. This is going to be a super exciting meeting. I've been looking forward to this for so long. It's going to be a super special meeting because we do have a lot of firsts. We have our first Armed Forces Day that we're going to celebrate. We're also on Facebook Live, which we haven't done before, so hopefully that will work out. We actually have four proclamations this evening. And proclamations are one of our favorite things to do as mayor and council. And then, of course, we have three brand-new officers that we're going to be super happy to swear in. So with that, I would like to call the meeting to order. Linda, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meetings, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on a borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the May 31, 2023 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website. Councilwoman Homan?
Here.
Councilwoman Levasolo?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Yaccarino?
Here.
Councilman Delavizio?
Here.
Mayor Wodenski?
Here. All rise, and salute the faculty. Okay, we're going to switch things up on the agenda very quickly, and we're going to do our business first, and then we're going to get to the fun part of the meeting. So first, I would like the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve May 25, 2023 work-in-regular session minutes?
So moved, Levasolo.
Second, Yaccarino.
Councilwoman Homan?
Obstained.
Councilwoman Levasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yaccarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavizio?
Yes.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to have public comments for agenda items only. Does anybody have any comment on agenda items only? Not seeing anybody. I'd like to break it back and have a quick agenda review. As I mentioned, we are going to have four proclamations, and we're celebrating Armed Forces Day, and then we will be swearing in our three police officers. We also have our consent agenda. Consent agenda are matters that are considered routine. And so these are pretty routine today, a couple just to bring to note. We have our supplement for Crestwood Lake salary, so Crestwood Lake is up and running. We have a waiver for a Red Barn application. The Women's Club is going to have their townwide garage sale. We're also awarding Z-Pluck, which is the architect for 220, additional architectural services. And we have our bill list and authorization of a liquor license for a restaurant now. So I would like the motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Homan.
Second, please.
Second, O'Connell.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Levasolo?
Yeah.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yaccarino?
Obstained on 23, 174. Vote yes on the rest.
Councilman Delavizio?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Now we'll have our council reports. Councilman Ed O'Connell.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'll make it quick. DPW is keeping the Crestwood Lake and our fields nice and neat. I'd like a little more rain on the fields. Other than that, I think they're looking great. And just one tidbit, it was my pleasure to go to the Bergen County Policeman's graduation yesterday to see our recruits graduate and become Allendale officers. So thank you very much, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Councilman Delavizio.
So Land Use Committee met on the 8th of June. We had a quick meeting, not a lot on the agenda, but... So the variance package for residents to make things easier when they come before the land use board is complete. I'm just waiting for suggestions and recommendations from the committee members. So hopefully, next committee meeting, we'll get those, and we can get that out for our residents to have a nice, easier time when they come before the board. We did review some of our issues, still looking at our code and some different issues to make some recommendations and changes to make things better for the residents. And that was pretty much it. Keep it short, sweet.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Levasolo.
I'm cutting down my report because Joe looked at it and was appalled. So the Finance, Human Resources, and Administration Committee will be meeting again next week. Our big task for this year was successfully completed with the introduction approval of our budget with a 0% municipal tax increase for this year. So we're very pleased. We'll be looking to move forward with an eye on trends, increasing cost of waste and garbage disposal, increasing healthcare costs, what have you. So once again, you know, this message that I just want to carry forward from last night's town hall is if anyone has any questions about anything in regard to the budget or regard to where money goes, what have you, please feel free to text me, to call me, to find me getting a coffee in town, to email me. We are more than happy to answer your questions directly and would love to do so. Tonight, I just want to thank all of the armed service member families who are here, as well as everyone in Allendale who is part of our armed servicemen and women. I think your dedication and commitment and service is only matched by your family's dedication and selflessness. So I want to thank all the families who are here tonight as well. On this Saturday, is part of our proclamations tonight, but we will be having a celebration of celery farm starting 11 o'clock, and then at the John Fell House at 3:00 PM for Stiles Thomas, in honor of Stiles Thomas. So we ask all of you to join us at those events this weekend as well. And speaking of the Fell House, we had a huge tree that fell across the driveway at the Fell House and slightly onto Franklin Turnpike. I want to thank Patty Finn and her husband Jim Wright for helping to clear that away off of Franklin Turnpike, in addition to our DPW worker Ray Frazier. I really, really, really appreciate their help. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Homan, Council President Homan.
Thank you. So yes, certainly, along with what Suzanne had shared, thank you so much to all of the individuals that serve in our armed services, as well as all of their families and what they continue to give and all the support that they provide. And I also want to say thank you to the fact that we're going to be doing the Stiles Thomas stuff this weekend, as well as tonight. Unfortunately, I'll be away, but he is just an incredible individual who gave so much to Allendale, and it was just a pleasure to have him around. I remember him doing 90 push-ups on the day he turned 90. He did them in sets of 10, he told me. It was amazing. So as far as my water report, last night, we had a town hall meeting talking about the water, and I was very appreciative at the way that the community came together, asking questions and being open to hearing information. And as Suzanne had stated earlier, if there's any time where there are questions, I do want to be approached. I'm certainly more than willing to share anything that we know about the water system, and we are going to be putting on to our website an update that will share what the timing is for the temporary treatment for PFAS that will be going in, in the different sites in town. So thanks so much.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councilman O'Toole.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Tuesday, we had our public safety meeting. We were hosted at the Allendale Volunteer Ambulance Corps. We had a good conversation with them about some of the issues that they're having in town, as far as getting members and things like that. We discussed one exciting thing that is going to be coming to town. We're going to be hosting a blood drive in October. A very good friend of mine, dear friend of mine, is doing it in memory of his father. So I wanted to make it happen. There's a tremendous blood shortage going around right now. As Chair of Public Safety, I had an opportunity, along with the rest of the committee, to sit down with the three recruits who are being sworn in tonight, and I can say they're going to make very fine officers, serve the town of Allendale very, very well. So congratulations, guys, and thank you to everyone serving now. Thank you for your service to the country.
Thank you. Councilman Yaccarino.
Good. Thank you, Mayor. A short report tonight. One thing I really want to note, and thanks to the folks that reached out to me direct, we will be opening Crestwood Lake next Tuesday. As Hillside and Brookside School gets out, that was a popular request among families that had reached out, so we're happy to accommodate that request. And also, two weeks ago, as I noted previously, Allendale hosted the Northwest Bergen Council Members Association. So happy to say that the surrounding towns, we're going to start working together on several initiatives to help improve Allendale, as well as our surrounding committees. So we're really excited to get that off the ground, hoping to have another Facilities Committee meeting next week. And I'm really happy to be part of this meeting. Thanks to everyone who made it happen, and thank you to all those serving. Congratulations to our officers.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll do my mayor's report very quickly. As everybody mentioned, we did have our town hall last night. I thought it was very successful. It was two of our biggest projects that we have going on in town, the 220 project, as well as the sale of the water. And I thought residents had great questions, and again, I would like to echo what everybody else said. We are very approachable. Please come to us if you have any questions. You will get direct, accurate information from us. You will not get that on Facebook. So again, we're very happy to answer anybody's questions, and our numbers and emails are out there. We had a busy week this week. Councilman Yaccarino, myself, visited the second graders at Hillside on Flag Day, and they had lots of questions, and they were very, very excited. And we have about 90 letters to go through that they gave us for all their requests. A lot of them had to do with animals, I will say, when I briefly looked through them. And also, Northern Highlands had their senior awards this week. So there's a lot of young, bright individuals that are graduating through Northern Highlands and leaving it a wonderful legacy. Thank you so much to John Gill and Amanda and Linda and everybody for setting this up tonight. We don't usually have all these decorations, and I don't know if you saw the flags coming in, but I thought they looked absolutely awesome. So to not have done it was absolutely... So on another note, Anthony Tony Ward recently passed away. He was the dad of Teresa, who happens to be here today, and Joe, and the father-in-law of the Colonel, and he was married to Joan. They raised their four children in Allendale, and they all graduated Northern Highlands. Tony was on the town council in the '70s, and I need to find more out about this, but apparently, he chased the mafia out of town when they stood up to the sanitation department. I really need to get that... But he also worked at the Van Houtens to turn Crestwood Lake into the Borough Swimming Facility and helped secure funding to purchase the celery farm. So a guy is a hero in my book. So we just want to pay our respects to the family who's here this evening. And of course, I have to... Have to mention 220 at every single meeting, so everybody's updated. 220 is up. I know it looks large, however, it's going to be beautiful because our building will be going to bid in about two weeks, and we're hoping that it will be built shortly thereafter. So with that, I would like to turn it over and go to our staff reports. Ray West, our Borough Attorney.
I will defer to the next meeting, Mayor.
All right. Chief, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a momentous occasion for both of our own departments, so thank you for your continued...
Excellent. Our clerk, Linda.
Thank you, Mayor. The primary election went smoothly, and I'd just like to thank the super board workers, the board workers, John Gill, Amanda Richards, Kim Oliveri, and the Allendale Police Department for their assistance on Election Day.
And our Director of Communications, John Gill.
I will defer to the next meeting.
All right, because we want to all get to the fun stuff. There's good food in the back. All right. Any unfinished business? Any new business? I'd like to open the meeting to a public comment on any item, any matter that you'd like to speak to. Anybody wishing to come up to speak on any matter?
Sure, if you would want to, Mark. That'd be great. Thank you for coming. Mark is the head of our green team, and I was going to report out on the numbers on our very successful environmental day, but it can wait till the next one. I'm sure everyone here appreciates that. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. All right, so now, next, we're going... Of course, come on up. Please come up. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Laura Mecca. I live at 32 Sore Court here in Allendale. And I just remember about 10 years ago, I attended Memorial Day celebration of Firehouse, and they were honoring some of the surviving World War II veterans. And one of the fellows mentioned how his family owned a dry cleaning store here in Allendale. And I always wondered about the contamination of the wells, and probably when he was a boy in the '30s and early '40s, before he went into the service. I don't think we had sewers back then, and I always wondered if, you know, what'd they do with their chemicals? They probably poured into the sewage and went directly into the ground. I always wondered if it was a good idea to find out where that store was, find out where the sewage plant, where the, you know, septic system was, and dig it up. I wonder if there's a lot of chemicals there and been leaching into the water supply over the last 35, 40 years. That's what I was...
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to come up and speak? Not seeing anyone? Next, we will have the swearing in of our police officers. I have Resolution 23-160 authorize the hiring of Police Officer Christian Michael Moore. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So I have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Levasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yaccarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavizio?
Yes.
I'm going to read all three resolutions, and then we'll do the swearing in, so we don't have to go up and down. Resolution 23-161 authorize hiring a police officer, Justin Peter Hugerich. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
The Councilwoman Levasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yaccarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavizio?
Yes.
Thank you. And I have Resolution 23-162 authorize hiring a police officer, Dimitri Vincent Ford. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, O'Connell.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Levasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yaccarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavizio?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And now we'll have the swearing in. We'll do that in that order, Christian, Justin, and then Dimitri. I state your name.
I, Christian Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And the governments established.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of a police officer.
All the duties of a police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to get out of the background. What?
Thank you. Congratulations.
No, go! Go!
Come on, now's your time.
Fun! Yes!
I?
I, Justin Hugerich.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
Allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
Justly perform.
All the duties of a police officer.
All the duties of a police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Four. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome to... Come down. Come on up. Let's hold the Bible. I state your name.
I, Demetri Ford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of a police officer.
All the duties of a police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. High five. All right, thanks. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You're welcome. I know, got to zip back.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Okay, now for the fun part. Proclamation.
That was pretty fun.
That was fun. You're right. You're absolutely right. That was super fun. Didn't mean it like that. Okay. Okay, first, we have a proclamation in honor of Stiles Thomas. Whereas Stiles Thomas was born and raised in Allendale and spent 95 of the 99 years of his life in our borough. And whereas Mr. Thomas was the first student to attend Brookside School and to lose a baby tooth there. And whereas Stiles was a World War II veteran who led his fellow veterans when they marched in the Allendale Memorial Parade every year. And whereas Mr. Thomas started the Stiles Thomas Insurance Agency in Allendale in 1948. And whereas he and his wife Lillian lived in the same house in Allendale for 73 years. And whereas Mr. Thomas and Mr. Ed Fitzpatrick led efforts to save 107 acres of wetlands in town and turn them into the celery farm natural area. And whereas he served as the town's marsh warden for 26 years. And whereas Stiles was master of ceremonies at many events, an Allendale holiday observer, an advocate for hawks and other raptors, a former Golden Gloves boxer, a yodeler, a bird carver, and a practical joker, that he was. Whereas most of all, Stiles was an all-around amazing man. Therefore, I, Amy Wodenski, on behalf of the governing body and the residents of the Borough of Allendale, hereby acknowledge with great gratitude Stiles Thomas dedicated service to the Borough of Allendale and proclaim June 17, 2023, Stiles Thomas Day here in the Borough of Allendale.
Mayor, in tribute to Stiles Thomas, once known as the Bluebird Man of Bergen County, Mike Bertelli, Allendale's resident sculptor par excellence, would like to do a modest memorial bronze of a bluebird on a marble base with a plaque. Given how much Stiles loved the library, the Thomas family wonders if a statue could be placed outside the rear library entrance by the Garden Club Flower Garden or a similar spot. Library Director Patty Dursow is in full support of this proposal, but since the library is on borough property, the Borough Council would need to okay the statue should be located there. I am very pleased to let everyone know, we talked about this in advance of tonight's meeting, and everyone is unanimously on board with this proposal. So the statue in honor of Stiles will be placed outside the library.
Okay, our next proclamation is a surprise. It's a proclamation in honor of Joseph Thaddeus Ward. Don't look at me. Look around. Your family members there. Whereas Joseph Thaddeus Ward was born and raised in the Borough of Allendale and graduated from Hillside School, Brookside School, and Northern Highlands Regional High School. And whereas he learned the meaning of service early as a member of Boy Scout Troop 59. And whereas, on September 10, 1979, Joseph enlisted in the United States Air Force, serving until his retirement on September 9, 1999. And whereas, during this time in the Air Force, he served at the Defense Intelligence Agency from December 21, 1987 to August 1, 1991. And whereas, his dedication to the defense of our country continued with his service at the Central Intelligence Agency, where he served from August of 1991 to June 30, 2023. And whereas, in total, Joseph Thaddeus Ward served exactly 16,000 days, 43 years, nine months, and 21 days, defending the Constitution of the United States and providing security for his fellow status citizens. Whereas, the following quote reflects Joseph Thaddeus Ward's life of service. "The truth of the matter is that you always know the right thing to do. The hard part is doing it." General Norman Sorchoff. General Norman Sorchoff, Junior U.S. Army Commander, U.S. Central Command. Now therefore, I, Mayor Amy Wodensky, on behalf of the governing body and the residents of the Borough of Allendale, hereby acknowledge with great gratitude Joseph Thaddeus Ward's dedicated service in the defense of our nation and wish him continued success in his future endeavors. And thank.
Endeavors.
Thank you. Congratulations. Right there. Did you want to take a picture with the, or anything? Okay, so now our, our next proclamation is also a surprise. It's a proclamation in honor of Colonel Richard Jackson the Second. Whereas Colonel Richard C. Jackson moved to Allendale in nineteen seventy-one and graduated from Northern Highlands Regional High School in nineteen seventy-six and was a member of Boy Scout Troop Fifty-Nine. And whereas Colonel Jackson enlisted in the Marine Corps from New Jersey in the spring of eighty-two and attended Cornell University. And whereas, after signals intelligence training at Corey Station, Florida, he was assigned to Company One Marine Support Battalion Naval Security Group Activity at ADAC Alaska. And whereas in nineteen eighty-six, he was accepted for the enlisted commissioning education program where he attended Officer Candidate School, the Basic School, and the Infantry Officers Course. And whereas Colonel Jackson initials posting as a commissioned officer was to Keneohe Marine Corps Station where he served as a platoon commander with Lima Company, the eighty-one millimeter mortar platoon commander, followed by executive officer of weapons company, all with the Third Battalion, Third Marine Regiment. Whereas Colonel Jackson's distinguished career found in various posts of leadership including serving as Staff Platoon Commander for Alpha Company, aide-de-camp for Commanding General Training and Education Command, commanding officer of Suicide Charlie, First Battalion, Seventh Marine, and of Headquarters Company, commanding officer of Recruiting Station, Kansas City, Senior Advisor to the First Brigade Royal Saudi Marine Forces and Eastern Fleet in Jubail, Saudi Arabia. And whereas post nine eleven, Colonel Jackson was assigned to the Navy Warfare Development Command in Newport, Rhode Island as an active officer in the doctrine department. During this tour, he also served as an individual augment at Camp Blue Diamond, Ramadi, Iraq, as the director and then assistant director of their Iraqi Security Force cell, G Three, First Marine Division. And whereas, while at Newport, Colonel Jackson attended top-level school at the Naval War College and then assumed command of the Marine Corps Anti-Terrorism Battalion, Second Marine Division. And whereas, following that, he served as the Assistant Chief of Staff, United States Africa Command in Stuttgart, Germany, followed by a tour as commanding officer, Officer Candidate School in Quantico, Virginia, and completed a two-year tour as Chief of Staff for Marine Forces Central Command, deployed in Bayran in the Persian Gulf, followed by a two-year tour as the Assistant Professor instructing defense strategy acquisition and resounding at the Eisenhower School for National Security and Research Strategy of the National War College, and served as Chief of the Marine Forces Division, United States Military Training Mission, Kingdom of Saudi Arabia. And whereas Colonel Jackson is married to his high school sweetheart, the former Teresa Ward, and they have four children, Caitlin, John, who's a Lieutenant Commander in the U.S. Navy, Leanne, Rebecca, and husband Rob, and Bo, who's First Lieutenant Richard Jackson the Third in the U.S. Marine Corps, and Pran, proud grandfather to Benji. Now therefore, I, Mayor Amy Wodensky, on behalf of the governing body and the residents of the Borough of Allendale, hereby acknowledge with great gratitude Colonel Jackson's dedicated services to the defense of the nation. That was actually the longest proclamation I have ever read. I just wanted to say before I come down there, I happened to run into Colonel Jackson at Valley Hospital. We were both there for our mothers. And he, I introduced him to my father, who's also a veteran, and he was so gracious and he had such a long conversation with him. And my dad was so impressed that the whole day he kept on saying, "That guy is the real deal, Amy, you don't understand. That guy is the real deal." But when we were talking, you talked about your service, you said that you've lived, you know, obviously, all over the whole entire world, but you just always had a special place in your heart for Allendale. And Allendale always felt like it was your hometown. So on behalf of the mayor and council, we would like to give you a key to the Borough of Allendale. And for the woman who has all this fabulous men around them, we'd love to offer these flowers to Teresa. Yeah, I have one with the flowers.
Yeah. Amy arranged these yourself.
I think if you all stood, do you mind the mayor?
Yeah, that'd be awesome, I love that.
You guys keep getting cast out of the poll.
I know, I know, we can figure out a better way.
All beautiful. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Thomas. Congratulations.
It's something special.
Absolutely. When the mayor mentioned that I've been stationed all over the world, I have. And you need to know how special Allendale and unique Allendale is with service members. Not every person has a hometown that's praying for them and wishing them well and, and, you know, sending the, have the holiday observers send them something. When you talked about the, the second graders at Hillside, every year that I was in the Marine Corps, the, the rising third grade class sent me pictures at Christmas time, no matter where I was. That's what Allendale needs to do, the service members serving throughout the world. So on behalf of all the people that have served in the military from Allendale, thank the, I want to thank the town for the support that you have given us over the hundreds, hundreds of years that, that Allendale has endured. So thank you very much.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, let me. All right. So now I'd like to talk about Armed Forces Day for a moment. We are here today to honor and praise the work of the young man and woman in Allendale who are in the military service at home and overseas. These Allendale kids are courageous and brave, and their service is vital to the security of the nation for the ultimate goal of peace. On behalf of myself and the rest of the council, we are really, really happy to be doing this for the first time in Allendale. This started, um, like almost a year ago. I had a conversation with the military mom, Jen Winter. She's, oh, she's here in the back. And we talked about this, how do we honor? There's so many, you know, Allendale kids, and we knew some of them and, and some we didn't. And there were so many Allendale kids, and we were just kind of going back and forth. And right, it was about a year, a year and a half ago. And honestly, I have to say, I didn't even know like what Armed Forces Day was, I have to say. And about a month ago, a military dad, Joe Hart, came up to me and said, "You know what? We got to do something for these kids." And like, "I can't believe you just said that, like, this is always something that's been front of mine." So between Joe and I, we kind of curated a list in the past month, and then Joe did like a ton of legwork to really reach out to all of these Allendale families. I think we have, what, we found twenty, twenty-three? So the, every list that we had had some missing families. So we have a great list that we put together. So the timing was perfect. The timing worked out perfect with, with the Colonel. And then when he asked to surprise his brother-in-law and everything just really came together and with our three police officers. So like I told you, this was going to be a really fun meeting, and it really is. So with that, I would like to read a proclamation in honor of Armed Forces Appreciation Day. Whereas the Armed Forces of the United States serve as a unified team at home and across the seas in pursuit of durable peace. And whereas our military members do not swear allegiance to an individual group or political party, their oath is to the United States Constitution. By bringing people together from different races, religions, and sexual orientations and melding them into a cohesive fighting force, our military embodies the promise of our democratic experiment. And whereas the sacrifices that such members of the United States Armed Forces and family members that support them have preserved the liberties and have enriched this nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas, we are here today to celebrate as Armed Forces Day for those American men and women in uniform who serve selflessly to preserve democracy and freedom at home and around the world in times of war and in times of peace. And whereas, in nineteen forty-nine, the third Saturday of May has been proclaimed Armed Forces Day by the President of the United States and Commander in Chief, calling all Americans to remember those who gave their lives in defense of freedom and to honor the men and women of all of our armed forces who have served and are now serving our country together with their families. Now therefore, we, the mayor and council of the Borough of Allendale, do recognize Armed Forces Appreciation Day as a special day to show our appreciation of the military and encourage all citizens to display flags, ribbons, or personal messages to show their gratitude throughout the year. So now I'd like to call up Joe Hart.
So thank you, guys, for coming. It's been an amazing experience getting everybody to this special day. So we're going to call out the names, uh, because the family members come up and receive the certificates and a flag for those that are serving our country.
First, First Sergeant Tom Anderson, U.S. Army. With his family, please. Captain John Jack Brady, United States Marine Corps. At this point, we'd like to recognize Lieutenant Max Buchanan, United States Marine Corps. Uh, he's recently been deceased, so we thank him for the service to his country. Second Lieutenant Rachel Carey. Unfortunately, her family cannot be here tonight. Uh, Kyle Benny, United States Marine Corps. Lieutenant Commander Jonathan Newark, U.S. Navy. With his family, please come forward. Is Major Adam Gray here? No, I don't see him. He's our National Guard Air Force, uh, local ma- major. Lieutenant, uh, Lieutenant Tommy Hart, U.S. Navy. Uh, Captain Johnny Jung, U.S. Army, accompanied by his wife, Captain Rachel Jung. First Lieutenant Beau Jackson, United States Marine Corps.
We want to give a shout-out to the Winters as well, and our son's Matt in Okinawa.
Shout-out in Okinawa.
Little small town. Sergeant Samuel Jobb, United States Marine Corps. First Lieutenant Daniel Mecca, US Air Force. We actually have some future West Point cadets with us tonight, and we'd just like to recognize them today. First Cadet-to-be, Ryan Monigal, United States Miller Academy, West Point. Specialist Eric Narvarez, US Army. And our second Cadet-to-be, West Point Academy Cadet. He's leaving us soon, as is Ryan Monigal, to go to West Point. Charles Peruzzi. And in keeping with the West Point theme, our current West Point Cadet, Cadet Owen Roy. Next, and I'm not sure their family is in attendance, but Lieutenant Michael Sappio. This is Sappio family here. And our next family is pretty exceptional because they have three in the military. Captain Claire Shea, US Army. Captain Jerry Shea, US Army. And First Lieutenant Patrick Shea, US Army.
The stars mean, so the blue stars mean you have somebody in the military. So obviously, if you have one story, it's one child. And they have three stars because they have three children.
First Lieutenant Chris Stock, US Army. And our next and final family has two in. First Lieutenant Ed Winters, United States Marine Corps. And his brother, Second Lieutenant Billy Winters, US Army. How about a big round of applause for everybody?
A, a brief story about how Allendale kind of came together in the Middle East, right?
Uh, Okinawa.
Okinawa, okay.
So our son Edward is stationed in 29 Palms, California. He did a deployment over to Okinawa, Japan. And he's in the Chao Hall. And he's talking to another new lieutenant who's been deployed over there and finds out that he has family in New Jersey. And they start talking, and he asks Edward, "Where are you from?" And since we know there's actually no New Jersey, there's North Jersey and South Jersey, Edward says, "I'm from North Jersey." And says, "Oh, that's where my family's from too. Where in North Jersey?" And Edward figures, "Well, not a lot of people have heard about Allendale." So he says, "I'm near Paramus." And he says, "Wow, my family's near Paramus too." He says, "Where?" And Edward says, "Allendale." He says, "No way. That is where my family's from." And he says, "What street?" And Edward says, "Wilton Drive." And he says, "No way. My family lives at the top of Wilton Drive." So he didn't believe Edward, so Edward had to pull out his driver's license and show it to him. Because he was deployed, the driver's license had expired. And since the entire Allendale Police Department is here, I just want you to know, he came home recently on leave, and he has a new license. So we're all good. So the moral of the story is, you don't know where Allendale is going to take you, and you don't know where you're going to find Allendale.
Actually, if you look on the wall over there, there's a, a flag with six stars. There was one family in Allendale, I think in the, is there seven? Oh, geez. The Caputo family. So they donated that to, to us. They had actually seven. Anyway, that concludes our, our meeting. I would like to open up to the public. No, I think we're good, right? So with that, we have some refreshments in the back of the room. We have, we have some. So everybody, please, you're welcome to stay and celebrate our, our Armed Forces and our new police officers. So we hope to see you after. And I'd like to put that, a motion to adjourn. All in favor?